Hello, I just got your call. Um, anybody see that on Facebook? Yes. This was my father three weeks before.
Oh, no, I sent this to you.
Where's your laptop?
Oh, yeah. This is the work of the application for their own face.
Very good. Thank you very much for that. Um, couple of things still here to back up silence. The goal, firstly, this wouldn't be evening. Um, social media, I know we need to sort of get a meeting together, discuss our timing. Um, and also the Facebook city, share notes, chat night, share some dates, all of that would be great. Um, the development report, you know, and next edition will come out in January, so if you want to use, share us. Um, maybe somehow it'll be the deadline for that. And then there are two weeks until construction day. So, hand your ballot at the library, easier, and you could try. Okay, from me?
Okay, thank you. Council President, Eric. Um, construction, you know, being, um, you know, the, uh, dollars are close to being untargeted. You should be okay, uh, according to what I just spoke to Scott, uh, and then Scott Olson about this afternoon. Uh, I was double off on the county amended chair service agreement with parking lots, it's great, great. Yeah, the, uh, were ongoing is these PBA and EBW negotiations. So, that's, you know, good so far. Uh, and, uh, 139 Rockston Avenue, the big blue ugly house that everybody sees when they get, uh, when they go into park, into Columbia Park, is, uh, sketching to be torn down. There was a letter written to the owner, uh, asking them to, uh, giving them terms to take it down, and they agreed to do so. So, that's a good thing. And, uh, that's it. Thank you. And, uh, thank you again for helping push for the Miller's eight program to be titled, uh, Our Roads. Council member, segment, oh, no, I guess I don't want to order. Different series today. Um, no report, no report, okay. I'm good, Don.
I have a few things. Um, I will start with the Greenwood planning commission meeting was, uh, two weeks, two weeks ago. Uh, there are no real occasions the last time I recorded. Uh, they're still working on the building in Elset Borough, and you guys probably seen some of that construction down. They're putting construction down with Lincoln, and that's the diner that, um, we needed to pour down, uh, partly since, uh, uh, city needs to build there. So, again, some of the residents now having anticipation of the program coming to do that in point two point five. Um, I've got a letter, and they give me questions, so we, uh, we can meet or contact the number, uh, uh, on the, the, uh, letter itself. Um, first, the starting meeting was last week. Uh, it did mention this goes to, uh, the Chair of the Financial City, uh, of the Affairs, well, Mayor Palento. Um, that, uh, they will have to be making their full payment this year, so I think we will be, uh, we'll have to, to talk about that in respect to our larger budget. Um, there, as you might expect, their largest revenue comes from the train station, and given the situation, their revenues are way down. Air permanency and uptick, um, so hopefully we'll end the, uh, the year on a quick note. And, uh, also thank you to Mr. Ritter for answering the question about, uh, last, uh, time in the booth, whether or not landlords tend to require, uh, their tenants, uh, how, for, I think the shorthand is no, specifically required by the borough. We'll just make something they want to consider, uh, for apartment this year. Um, and one second, before we have you for the diversity inclusion committee for additional dates, perhaps we could try to get that on the, on the, on the, on the, on the.
And then, uh, my last, we think I'll be out of town. So, let's, uh.
I feel like thirty.
We'll get it on the calendar, apologize.
Thank you. Um, and just an update from, uh, CCW, as we talked about last time, we've been able to improve another, uh, capital improvement requirement that was beyond repair. Um, that we have, uh, been able to set the producer's bid for the roll-off, no truck on ours, and go my team to get things to the mayor and council person who was much needed for, uh, purchases. Uh, again, just an update, so again, I want to thank, uh, EBW's manager, uh, Mr. Miller, for providing this update, uh, for the council of the community. Uh, she helped me to set up a church in downtown, which has been very visible, so generally people change the theme of downtown. Uh, in the last city, they've created the south side of the downtown, uh, there are all the hatchback, the grates, and beams from the green. Uh, we worked with the E and G on moving a large stream of power lines, uh, started picking up the effect. Just a reminder, this staff program, uh, runs from October to December, and you can pick up those effects, uh, after recycling yards. Um, and just, uh, the, the guys are picking them out, uh, you know, as they are able to, so if you know it's going to rain in the next couple of days, sure, that's a little note, uh, you're going to get wet and soggy in the back of the ballpark. Um, Hopsail has been added to Washington Memorial Park, uh, where it's done with ground, ground, uh, private steps. Uh, the Saturday roll-off, Hopsail collection is continuing for, uh, Saturday, thanks to everybody in, uh, life. Uh, and our, uh, agents for past agent roll-off, I mean, hopefully it will be the last of its, uh, purposes, and the most, uh, story of that. Just a reminder, and, uh, thanks also to, uh, police, uh, for working with our mechanics, uh, Richard, uh, and we will, uh, attend some of the other, um, uh, so we have open town as well. Uh, and, uh, last thing, this is, uh, we'll be getting quite a few bike ride in town, that's the right, and the running of the purpose, and now I'm going to use my breakfast, and some plumbing and plumbing. So, uh, thanks again for all the, uh, we're looking, uh, this, this.
Thank you. Uh, my regards.
Um, Dr. Dunn touched on the touch and things that I had talked about, so, so, please name me. All right, um, for the rest department, the Halloween parade is still on for Saturday, October 31st, at noon, registration starts at eleven thirty. Um, CCM Hall, part of Best to Shoot, because we have about a hundred vendors, a lot of great, thank you all that help and contributed, plus local businesses. Um, Denell and local ability study, I have gotten a post draft of the report today, and I have had cancer read yet, but hopefully it'll be a good read, and we should get the final draft hopefully in November, so everybody can see that happen. Uh, next work ed meeting is tomorrow at seven thirty. Just to add on to Councilwoman Rea's report, they're not just giving out lunches, they're also giving out markets as well, so you're going to get an entire state for that. Um, at school, I ought to, uh, the special education and some things, so you'll, you'll start going to schools, it's turning on our cyber, so you'll notice the custom guards throughout the nation. Um, make sure you stay below, but keep your eyes open, it's part of all the kids that I'm doing three. Um, food bank donations, uh, just a reminder, Wednesday the twenty eighth, from ten AM to twelve PM, and then Thursday the twenty ninth, from five to seven, at the old Whittier School. Next pickup will be Saturday, November seventh, if you are in need, please contact, uh, Miller, and remember all the situations that come to it.
Thank you.
Uh, thanks for that, I'll leave that.
That's all. It's a good thing that some of the, some of the others got picked up.
Uh, I know, I thought you said that's less than me, all night. Some people.
Okay, I have a short list. Uh, so COVID-19 update, as of today, we currently have cumulative total of two hundred forty-six, or it's known that additional eight cases sent by Council report on ten, uh, October fifth, two thousand twenty. Uh, we, we are still currently at nine deaths. Uh, Denell and and Middlesex County cumulative totals can be found at, uh, discovermiddlesex.com backslash total cumulative backslash, if you want to do, it is total, uh, cumulative totals. You can find that at, uh, www.covid19.nk.gov. Uh, Dr. Dunn will send you the specifics, so you can help me with the draft. Thank you for continuing to support with that. Um, please continue publicly, and everybody, even those of us in these chambers, please continue to practice social distancing and wearing of a mask. This will help prevent further spread, um, so we can, you know, continue to keep COVID hanging. Um, if you're in need of assistance due to health crisis, please contact a crisis text line by texting NJ to seven four one seven four one, or call the family helpline, one eight hundred eight four three five four three seven. Please use each resources during this town, these times, you matter, we want to keep you safe. Uh, the borough events that have been taking place, Harvison, congratulations, I'm going to reiterate what you said, uh, Councilwoman Harvison, such a great turnout. Um, a lot, a lot of out of towners too, visited to go for this event, it's good, we want to track down outsiders to Denell. A lot of familiar faces too, it was a great event, and, uh, it was, I think it had the first Denell booth at the event. So, thank you to all the council members who were able to sit with me and promote some of the other events going on in town, and also answered questions, um, on our capital improvement odds ordinance, to, uh, everything else going on in town. So, thank you for stopping by the booth, and always reach out to us for questions, we're always happy to answer. Uh, the Miracle Mile fundraiser, uh, great event, we, we raised a little bit near three thousand right now, I believe. We're continuing to collect, uh, merchandise forms, Denell and strong merchandise, we're selling that up until November twentieth, so please continue to support that, support the mom and pop shops downtown. And thank you again to the Denell River Broader Club for sponsoring this event, it's, uh, they're truly a great organization in town. We had this Sunday, along the Street Dreams event at the train station, Councilmember Dunn was with me, uh, we handed out our award, that was a great event. It, I was, I couldn't tell you, I was surprised with how many cars, or, or, or. Still, still. And, uh, and then at four thirty that evening, we had the Imperial Brass, and that was a pleasant surprise, that amazing, great music. And, uh, I've already spoken to Alex Miller that we have to have him back next year, it'd be great if he didn't have on that other event. They were amazing, they were amazing. Um, regarding Ascensus two thousand twenty, it's completed, done, and, uh, Denell has a response rate of seventy-five point six percent, which is an increase from two thousand and ten sixty-nine percent. So, I do want to send, send a great thank, congratulations to Julie Braun, uh, she was our project manager for Denell's Ascensus, uh, response, uh, which, again, was a grant that we obtained in Middlesex County. So, she really helped us get a good, a spot rate this year, this decade. Um, our color, um, uh, the redevelopment is still painting, um, remaining outside agency approval, and addressing redevelopment agreement requirement. So, it is moving forward, we're just, uh, doing some, checking off some items on their list. Capital improvements, Grove Street is going to be starting at the end of the month, uh, we received information from CME, our engineers, Railroad Ave, Culver, not Culver, apologize, Railroad Ave, still repaired. Uh, work should begin once we receive receipts from New Jersey Transit, which we are, uh, seeking their approval. Uh, Halloween still on for door-to-door trick-or-treating, uh, please be respectful council, who do not wish to participate. Uh, also, as we discussed this evening, the Denell PTO has set up key location for residents who, uh, would rather. be safe in the trick-or-treating, they're doing the comfort treat, um, so that's a preregistration, I know they have information on Facebook, do they have a website, I don't know.
No, website on the school district's website.
Okay.
Yeah, but you know, that would be good.
Okay, so you can find that information on denellinschool dot org, right, that's the website? Um, I, I have a, just now, a new topic, I have assigned, Council President Ken Bayer, Council Member Stacy Narvison, Borough Admin Bill Robbins, Land Board Chair Ron DeDornier, and, uh, former council member involved in this will be assigned enforcement committee to review our current signed enforcement, uh, signed enforcement ordinance. Uh, the goal is to simplify it, so we can enforce it appropriately. Um, I've commu- communicated to these members , um, to follow what I would say is three pillars, if council has any, any other suggestions, but I'm going to read it out. Uh, number one, the evaluation, review the current ordinance, and make recommendations. Two, educate, communicate the ordinance to the public and business owners, and then three, enforcement upon it, educating the public and business owners on the ordinance, and phase in enforcement. Um, this has been a long conversation regarding sign enforcement, um, in our business district and throughout the town on other matters, and I think it's important that we evaluate and make sure that we actually have ordinance that is understandable to the public, to the businesses, and enforcement can actually enforce it. So, no other questions on that? No, just, okay.
Do you have, uh, permit, please, to enforce the ordinance, we're just waiting for this process to be completed before we are able to do the education, communication, and enforcement.
I think this is probably the best way to go about it, because we, there's been a lot of discussions and debate about whether the current one is enforceable, so this, this will give opportunity to, uh, will you say something? I'll say yes. Oh, okay, I think that's a give opportunity to see what's actually enforceable, because there's been much debate around the topic, so, um, that's a wrap, that's just on that topic. There's been many, I can't tell you how many planning board meetings I've sat through the years to get this, um, sign ordinance where it is now, um, and that's been modified over and over again, because we've always had the issues with, you know, public letters, or, you know, this, that, and everything, so it's, it's a, it's a moving target, but we're going to get it fixed. We're going to make it make sense, and we're going to, and we're going to, we have somebody that's willing to actually enforce it and get it done, that's what we should. Yeah, hopefully this, we can get this done by the end of the year. Um, and then my, I have a question regarding the shared service agreement with the school district, um, I'm hoping we're prepared for council to be able to review and discuss and hopefully vote on our, like, council meeting, we're perfecting. But all we said to the school district, uh, it depends on whether to turn around, what sort of events we have, but that is for COVID. Okay, I'm just going to make a blanket statement, um, when the mayor and council set an expectation, we don't expect for it to take a month for it to be done, we expect there to be a decent turnaround. So if we have to start setting deadlines to these things internally, we will do so. But I will make that blanket statement, this has been a, a thing that's been going on too long, but not just this matter, all of them matters, so that will be my statement on that. Plus, I don't think we anticipate any, anything coming back. Uh, I, I think this was, uh, talked about, both parties have seen, have seen the document. So I don't think there's any, uh, too much of a chance of anybody sending it back for, um, your mouth to God's ears. No, it is educated, but this floor, I think, isn't, isn't up to their ends in the bargain. Yeah, that was, that already good, that already good. Well, yeah, they don't need to be more common, sharing. Okay, so pending schools' legal counsel on there, right, okay. That is it from me tonight, is there any department kids before we open up to the public, that have anything to add to our discussion, or reports?
Yes, this is Homer Mosley from O E M. First of all, I like.
How are you, Homer?
Good, how about yourself?
Good, thank you, what's up?
Okay, just wanted to thank, uh, April Burke for the fine jobs he did, uh, in terms of, uh, summarizing O E M functions in the article, very well done, very thorough. Uh, there's only one point I like to, uh, make, is the fact that, uh, there's a listing of agencies in that, uh, Denellin report. All the agencies and the, and the departments of government, O E M is not in that, in that mix. So, um, I don't know who would, uh, make sure that O E M as a agency is also listed in that list.
Okay, we'll make sure of that, I apologize, that's, that's our oversight, and we'll make sure you're at in the government directory, that's what you're talking about, right?
Yes, the government directory, right. Uh, number two, um, as you know, that we're trying to arrange for the, uh, for, for the council members separately, of course, so that, uh, it's done legally for an executive freeze bin, I did get responses from most of the, uh, council members. So again, uh, check your, that council members, please, check, check your, uh, email, and let me know what they, or I should say, what time and day is best for you, so we can arrange for that, the one-hour freeze bin. Um, number three, uh, the, the team members of O E M continue to work on the, uh, E O Ps. In fact, I heard that the couple of, uh, the rescue as well as, um, uh, preliminary fire is, is, is just about done. I've been reviewing the, uh, operations of portion of O E M, so, uh, we ex, we really truly expect to have all those done by the end of the year. Again, I, I like to send my thanks to April Burke, who has been very helpful in that matter. Um, also, CARES, uh, most of the inputs have been done. Um, I'd like to thank, uh, Bill Robbins for assisting me in terms of putting in those expenses, so that we have faced to, will get some monies back for the, uh, for the CARES Act. Um, any, the, any department, uh, expenses should be submitted, especially those, uh, those that are related to payroll that are COVID-related, because I think we can also include those. Um, that's about it. Um, okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Homer. Um, I just have one addition from my report. Um, D M R survey is almost ready, we've, we've been working on it, so the, the target date is, uh, thirty, 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 thirty-one, I'm born in November, so I should know. Uh, till the end of the month, uh, the survey will be released in a survey monkey format, as well as some hard copies in some key strategic locations regarding the, uh, community vision, um, and it would be for the downtown to amend into our redevelopment plan, so the public should be aware of that. Uh, if you look after that information, of course, we'll, we'll, we'll digitally, um, email it out and let people know where the key locations are, so, uh, and then that, okay, so just making that public. Okay, at this time, we will open this portion of the meeting to the public, please state your name, address, and, uh, your comments, questions, or concerns.
Hi, can everyone hear me?
Yeah, speaking.
Perfect, uh, my name is Arilla, and I am on seven four fourth Center Street. Um, we've lived in Denellin for the past eleven years, and my question was, what is Denellin lighting ordinance specifically for a joint home, like town housing, and semi-attached property? The reason I bring this up is that, um, our neighbor drives right next to us, they have a very wide angle, you know, one eighty angle floodlight. Um, it's extremely sensitive to movement, and it's aimed directly at our driveway. We can't walk outside, we can't sit, sit outside, as a woman, I find it a huge privacy concern, um, it's almost light trespassing, if that's even a term. Um, I don't feel comfortable sitting outside with my daughter, um, I understand they have rights to light this property, but I think there should be some type of ordinance which indicates, you know, what luminous lights can be, especially if it is a joint property. Uh, again, same thing, we have a problem in our backyard where those in there, floodlighting, directed upwards. Just being through my bedroom, I purchased lines, but it doesn't help, we brought the issue up to, uh, George King, and he didn't have much insight, um, he says that there may not be any light or nuisance. Um, I feel like the only other way to remedy this is to get an injunction for my property, but I really don't think that it could escalate to that level. Um, it's a nuisance, uh, it's a huge, I think, violation of, of just privacy, and I would appreciate it, um, if you can, uh, look into this matter for me.
Dylan, I'm not aware of an ordinance that, again, addresses light, uh, nuisance. Um, Mr. King investigated, as Coleman said, uh, he reported to me that it was a motion sensor that's one of them, and it was not on when, looked, I've been asking to return, uh, but undoubtedly the situation exists in all the country with every bright floodlights. I'm not aware of any municipal ordinance that covers.
If there isn't one, is there, is there something that we should be looking into, I'm sure there are other towns, just like there's a noise ordinance that, you know, you can't play music, you know, beyond a certain time, um, should we look at, and, and again, I'm not saying that they shouldn't light their driveways, of course, but if you count the lights, they have five lights covering a driveway that's only long enough for one car. And these aren't light, you know, very dim lights, these are floodlights.
And, uh, my name is John, I'm the attorney, and while I've been doing, I've been a municipal attorney for more than twenty years, I I've never heard that question before, so it's a good question, and I can tell you that I am not aware of, uh, any of the municipalities that I'm in having a light ordinance, but that's not to say we can't do it, but if you will be patient, I will be glad to look into this question and report on it at the next council meeting.
Absolutely, not a problem at all, just something that really, I mean, this entire summer, we didn't sit outside even once. We can't do it, because the whole world moves when we're sitting outside, it's very, very sensitive, the sensor, you, you, you call, and it's going to go off. I understand, you know, it's, uh, it's a motion sensor, but I can, you know, scratch my knee because a mosquito bit me, and, and it goes off.
Uh, me and I.
So I think all of us.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, no, I'm just saying that, uh, all of us, we understand that, you know, when we sit outside, you know, we, we don't want all the attention on us through light, um, it's, it's just something that you're courteous with your neighbors, and this is just, it's, it's not working out, and so I just thought I'd bring this up to you guys, and see what can be done.
If you will, uh, tomorrow, reach out to the municipal, um, administrator, Mr. Robin, provide your contact information, I will be blessed to uh, look into this and speak, speak to you even before the next council meeting, and I'll also report, because I'm sure there are others listening in, I'm sure council members would also be interested to know the, the outcome of this research. Good things, though.
Absolutely.
One, have you, have you taken the opportunity to speak to your neighbor and ask them to, um, direct the lighting down, or to change the strength of their, their light bulb, have you done that yet, man?
I have not, uh, because they're a little strange, and that's just the only word I'm going to use, and, um, it's, it's not, it's not going to work by me speaking with them, we, because we've addressed other topics with them, and it just continues going back to wherever they started off. It doesn't, it's in through one ear, out the other. So I have young children at home, I just don't want to cause any type of friction with my neighbor, so I've tried to just left it alone, which is why I came to you guys.
Uh, they, I mean, typically, we add advocate to the neighbor, I understand there may be some say, I'm saying that's not optimal, but a lot of times, you'd be surprised, uh, that, that they may not even be aware that it's an issue from your perspective. Not having been said, one thing that, that initially comes to my mind is whether a municipality or a government can regulate lighting on private property, so that's going to be part of the focus, primarily the focus that I will be looking at. I'm not sure we can, and I'm not saying we cannot, I just have not heard of this sort of thing before, so I have, uh, the focus of my research.
Okay. Perfect, and, and what's the name of the gentleman I'm speaking with at the municipal office, I, I couldn't catch the name?
You're going to have to ask for Mr. Robin.
Sorry.
The, uh, administrator, and he will give your contact information forward.
Perfect, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Contact information will be come on our website.
Perfect, thank you.
You're welcome. Have a good evening.
You too.
Are there any other comments, questions, or concerns from the public, please state your name or address, and, and address. Without hearing any, this portion of the meeting will be closed. If there's no further business, can I have a motion for adjournment?
Most uncertain. Thank you, sir.
Hello, sir?
Hello, sir.
Thank you. You're welcome, everyone.